I'd like to call to order this work study in the district's district 624 board. I would ask for a follow-up role. Strike for working here. Thompson here, or Sam, Daniel, Nelson, Eric, here.
Right, thank you. We will move into our first discussion, item number one, Foundation of Success.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. I'm here today with community member Bill Maher, who was co-lead with me on this action team. We're excited to share the results of the work that we've done since September. So if you remember, we had a fifth action team that came together during our strategic planning process to create what's called, some districts have called the profile of a graduate, and we call ours the foundation of success. When we came together, we had an essential question and a goal that we asked our group. And our essential question at the time was, how will we develop a profile that defines a successful graduate from White Bear Lake area schools? Very quickly, our group talked about that we absolutely wanted to make sure that we encompass not only graduates, but any learner that's within our system. And so we, that's why we didn't hold on to the profile of a graduate and talked about foundation of success, so that our earliest learners could see themselves in this, in this document, but also our graduates. Our goal was to create a clear set of skills that defines a White Bear Lake area school's graduate that will align and be used to measure our strategic plan objectives. So when we were looking at our strategic plan, it was clear that we needed some help around some of our 100% objectives. And so this document will help bring us clarity around that as we continue. I'll talk at the end about some next steps. So that was really one of the greatest pushing points for us, is we wanted to create this document for us in our system. So how did we do this? An action team came together that included community members and White Bear Lake area staff. We met for five meetings from September to November, created a draft document, gathered feedback, and then we went, met one more time in March to examine all the different aspects of feedback that we received. When we first started with this group, we started with two questions. What is your hope for our students' future? And what would you like your child to be able to do when they graduate? And that we've really had robust conversations. From there, we looked at examples of profiles of a graduate, and then just kept talking and looking at words to describe, looking at examples, until we came up with our draft profile, Foundation of Success, which we never really, we called it a profile of a graduate for a very split second. And so the conversations from there, really Bill and I led the group and wanted to keep diving into those conversations, but making sure that not only was this a document that guided us internally, but those that, our community externally would also be really proud of this, but see themselves and make sure that it represented everyone. It wasn't something that was solely too much educator speak, which sometimes you can do in education. And so that was really a lot of the conversation we had. We used thesaurus a lot around words, and really had some robust conversation. From there, we gathered feedback. We engaged community, staff, and students in feedbacks around the draft document. Our principals, district department directors, and then Dr. Kasmercheck all led feedback conversations. So that was from our parent teacher organizations, advisory groups across the district, staff members, individuals, community members also reached out to people. We received feedback from over 25 different groups across our system, and then many more individuals. And really, it was any sort of feedback we got. We didn't, I didn't qualify it, saying, no, that's not the type of feedback we're looking for. People wrote all over the document, we took it. And then Bill and I put that all into themes and brought that back to our final meeting with the, our action team members in, in March, and took all that feedback into the final document that you see today. So, what I'm sharing with you, I have not done a good job of moving this forward, I apologize, is the final document, the Foundation of Success. And so I will read our objective statement to you. Our objective is to ensure each student achieves their personal goals and desired career pathway. We will provide educational experiences designed to develop skills defined by the following learned attributes. And so really, we came up with six key head categories, fundamental learning, flexible and critical thinking, community engagement, character, communication, and teamwork, which you can see detailed in the graphic to the right. And then under each one of those headings, we have a description of what we mean, and then some really key detailed statements or words that go along with how we are clearly defining those, those areas.
You know, the only thing I would add to this is, during our discussion point, one of the things that came up right away was, if you look at a lot of corporations or organizations, you will find that they'll have buckets of what they refer to it, and they'll use different terms. When I was at Proctor DMO, we used accounts factors. And it's like, you could almost take a look and say, that person works for PG because they have these type of characteristics. And some of our group early on said, it'd be great that at some point in time, we, if this rolled out, it becomes a glue that brings it together, but then the students that leave White Bear Lake, you can almost look at them and say, that's a White Bear Lake graduate, because this is the way they handle themselves, this is the way they communicate, et cetera, et cetera. So I think our focal point was to really build something that would go across strategies or across the action plans and represent the community. And I think Alison said best, it was something that came up early on. We didn't want this to be portrait of graduate, because, you know, look, I've got two second grade grandchildren. They're not thinking of graduation, they're thinking about ice cream tonight or something. And so we wanted to get something that was impactful, that we could use from the pre-K all the way through. Now, the way we teach it, the way we train it, the way we develop those skill sets will be totally different, obviously. But it's, it's a, it's a great opportunity. And that was something we kept in the back of our mind also, was that we wanted something that pertained to a second grader as much as it did a 12th grader, even though it went differently than the way it's taught.
We also really worked to look at words that were in our system, albeit some of our core values that you'll see on the back of wall in this room right now, or words that we've used in our strategic plan, words that are emerging as we look at our new unified high school, and use those words to guide some of our decisions, but also was there opportunity for alignment across our system. And we got really a lot of feedback, and amazing feedback around words that either people wanted us to think about differently, or a lot of it was really how, around formatting or noun verb agreement, which is always really helpful as we work in the education system. Yeah. So what are our next steps? One is to use the Foundation of Success as part of our curriculum review process. A lot of these skills and learned attributes are a part of the academic standards that students hear, that we're required to teach, but not all of them. And so how do we really help them think about, how are we measuring these skills? What opportunities does this present for us in our classrooms? A lot of our educators who gave us feedback, a lot of really great questions around next steps, excitement, and also wanting to talk more about that, communicating across our system about the Foundation of Success. And then again, it's always back to aligning our feedback assessment. Our students create personalized learning plans, that's part of our strategic plan. How do we dive into that? And so there's a lot of work around, now that we have this document, how do we make sure that it's a living document and not something that is, looks really great, sits on our website, but truly helps transform our work? So that, like Mr. Maher said, when we really graduate, students understand that these are skills that they can talk about, that they've developed within our system, and people know what White Bear Lake graduates are really holding on to when they graduate. So, I want to make sure we thank our fellow action team members. Mr. Maher has been a great facilitator and co-leader. Lanal Vaughn, Justin Sharper, Dave Lammers, Darcy Rodriguez, Drew Mariama, Angela Dreams, Victoria Posoto, and Kathleen Daniels all were really part of it. And it was a little bit of a daunting task when we first started, and we really had great conversations. So, thank you to all of them. And now we're ready for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have one.
Uh, Dr. Garcan?
This is really great that we're like, how do you get together? The only thing I always think about is, how do we know that we're meeting these? How do we measure, or how do we tell if we're getting the mark? And like you said, it's a living, breathing document. So how do we make sure that we're, our students are getting them, we're providing them opportunities to get them?
We talked a lot about, and we've talked a little bit internally around helping students assess themselves and thinking through some of those personalized learning plans. Some of these are able to be assessed in connection with our content area, and so really, that's, that's the next step of the work that we have, but we want to engage students around that. And so how do I see myself really demonstrating my own personal well-being, and for what does that mean to me as I dive into that and think about that? And kids at every single age level can think about that, and really, how do we help engage conversations around that? As an example.
I think, Steph, that's a, that's a really good question. It's also, sometimes it's pretty difficult. So that's something you're going to have to think through about, you know, whether it's surveys, whether it's, you know, just mandatory type of classes or curriculum type of things. I mean, how do you measure character? I mean, that's a really difficult question. But it might help people to look into the, I think Dave Lammers brought it up too, is that, he had somebody who was at McKinsey or something like that, and they actually have questionnaires, and they have different pieces that, kind of look at this and dive into them when we're there. So there might be resources outside the academic world and the business world to answer that question.
No questions? Uh, Dr. Newrster?
I agree with the, the first comment, that it's a really usable document. And I can see that as different groups focus in with their curriculum, that some of the fundamental things work a bit better with certain places, where they can actually have something that's measurable easily. But I also think the self-assessment is important, because we look at our younger kids with their emotional learning and how they're going to evaluate how they're feeling and relating. And I think they are getting the skills to do some of these things, and they probably could understand that. So some of it might be a softer type of number, self-assessment, but in all of them, whether you're service oriented, you can just have a portfolio that describes what you consider as service that you've done. Because what someone faces service and someone else discovers as an area they can fill is different. So I think it's a nice one that would fit a lot of different areas and ages. Would work just as well for adults as kids.
And we tried to keep this to one page. We really wanted to keep it one page, so it was easy for you to communicate to the public. We also found that as we went through that, that some of these characteristics are innate, you're born with, but you can still get them enhanced. Others are developed and learned, you know, as you go through your life experiences. So it's a, it's a really good mix of different components for somebody that, you know, is going through life. I really stress it, because Darcy was actually one of the people during the strategic planning that brought this to our attention. And you can Google it, you know, what a portrait of graduate, you can just Google it. There's a number of schools all over the country that are doing this. But we also, you know, made an inclusion right away, that we wanted to enhance it, so that if you have 8,500 students in this, in this school district, that 8,500 students have a, you know, a part of this equation from the moment they step on the campus.
I'll start with Mr. Goji and then Ms. Daniels.
So I love this, and I love that it crosses the other parts of the strategic plan. And I would just, having been early elementary, looking at how the key, the key areas, that language, if it can start really early on, that little kids can talk about flexibility and critical thinking, those terms, and then building each year, so as you look at how you're going to assess, just getting that language going early on, helping the kids understand what that looks like in a classroom. Flexibility for a kindergarten person. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Ms. Daniels.
My comment was, I just, I really appreciate you guys tying it all together, because there was so, there was so much to talk about in that group, and then to tunnel it all down to one page is amazing, because I, being part of it, and not, I wasn't at all the meetings, but the ones I participated in, everybody had so much feeling around everything, and to see it kind of in its final draft is really impressive, impressive. So thanks. And then I just, I think it's all great, but I love the community engagement part, because I think that's really important in our community, that our students, teachers, staff, our schools are, and they are engaged in the community, but I just, I just love that, I hope you so much. So thanks, Jan, for your hard work.
Yeah, one of the questions that also popped was whether or not it sort of applied to staff, faculty, and the answer was yes. I don't know how else to describe it. It's like, the focal point, you've noticed on there right in the middle, it says students, but it, the same attributes were applied to anybody who touches the school district board, whether it be outside consultants, or staff members, or, you know, bus drivers, et cetera. These are things that we felt were something about.
I have one thing, so similar to the strategies, the board will act on this, the next board needs to prove it. And then that will be, become part of our, on our strategic, on our page where we have our strategic plan, and that'll live there.
I have two questions. I mean, first of all, I think it's really great, and I think it shows so much depth of thinking. My first question is, I'm interested to see how you will use this for curriculum review. You know, because some of it feels very obvious, academic knowledge, of course, but I'm interested to see how that process is going to work as you're choosing new math curriculum. What will that look like, right? And then connected to that is the teacher training that will be involved in this, because I was, in looking at a lot of these words, these are things that I think a lot of teachers already do, but bringing out the intentionality. So I'm curious, you know, Ms. Babish as well, how you're going to fit this into the ways that we choose curriculum and train our teachers.
Well, and I, what I know to be true is, the next step will also be, Ms. Babish and I, Ms. Babish and I are looking at how we already test our students and what other parts of data come out for us that will help us define some of this, because we have so much data that we get from students, and we do a lot of, our best at collecting data around social emotional learning for students. And so it will really help us kind of hone in and get really specific on some areas, and then where we're lacking, we'll look at different surveys and things like that. So I really think it'll help us get focused on areas. And then we'll partner with our instructional coaches, with our principals around how, what does this look like, where are areas, as people are looking at this, what questions come up, what, where do we see people running with it and really excited about it? But that, that is the partnership that comes out of everything that we do, and they always think of really great ideas, and then opportunities for us to wrap around and provide support. So there's many more conversations still to have internally, but really, the first block, I have a whole list of questions that people asked on next steps already, and so we'll, we have really a great starting point.
And I think too, oh, one second, Mr. Goji. I think too, the other thing I'm interested in is how this will act as the foundation, included, for all the strategies that have been approved already for, by the board. And then since it's a living document, as you said, what are the ways that we will continue to be able to update, shift, to live by our own values of flexibility and community engagement? So I'm interested to see kind of what the arc is going forward. There wasn't a question in that, that was just a, I'm interested to see how that goes forward.
If you've seen the original, one of the first drafts, you'll notice like, up here, there are five banners up here with their own sign. They're buried in here in some form or fashion, but none of them actually rose up to saying, hey, that's, that's one of the attributes. It felt like there were other things that they had some, things just like this, where you might end up with six banners up here out of those six buckets. It's, you know, a starting point for educating people on what's important, what are the skill sets we're trying to develop, et cetera.
Mr. Goji.
You may have said this already, but you said, I missed it if you did, in March, you're going to get, get together to look at feedback. Where are you getting?
We already did.
Oh, you already got it?
Yep. So it was from all principals got feedback, either from building leadership, from their PTOs, we had community advisory groups, our district department leaders, feedback, students we received feedback from, so it was a lot of feedback, which is so great. And then we pulled it together in themes and brought it back to our action team, which came together in March to be able to get to this final draft. Yep. So then feedback in terms of moving forward, this will be our final draft for a while, and we'll see how people are giving us feedback, and then we'll get on a regular kind of refining, just like we do with the strategic plan.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into our next discussion, item B2, fiscal year 2023-24 budget adjustments. Mr. Wald and Ms. Johnson.
All right, thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kasmercheck. At our, in February, we brought the revised budget for 2023 to the school, to the school board, and that revised budget was approved. And at that time, it also included a projected budget. Thank you. A projected budget for 2024 that we would use for our planning. One thing we know about the projected budget this time of year is that we're, we don't have all the information that we'd like to have, and so we're using our, the best information we have available for us. And so as the legislature determines school funding, we, we're kind of guessing at what we think the scenarios will be and what we can work with. And so we know that these numbers might change a little bit, or perhaps significantly, but that's the projected budget. At that time, that budget included 2.1 million in reductions for 2024, and then 900,000 in 2025. So in the, in the meantime, since that February meeting, we've been visiting schools and presenting to staff about the budget, much of the information we shared with you in February, getting feedback from our staff, in some cases, some ideas that they've shared with us after the meetings, and good questions that they've asked. Point out that as we do our work around budget, like everything, every other component of our work, we keep the equity commitment in front of us and remind each other of the importance of that commitment. And, and it helps keep us focused on the impact of the work that we do. So thanks to our cabinet friends, who, as we've had these conversations, really hold us accountable in most regards, and hold each other accountable. We also note that we have a new commissioner of education, and in his direction or his advice through the legislature, he said, some words that sound a lot like what an educator might say, that students deserve high-quality academic instruction, instruction, and social emotional support. Our public schools must be provided with necessary resources to meet these needs. We appreciate that sentiment. One of the challenges that education has faced is that over the past 20 years, funding has not kept pace with inflation. So if we use this chart, and the legislators have been using this chart as well as a reference, you go back to 2003, the bottom left-hand corner of that chart, the funding level for the student formula was $4,966. Then you can see in the blue line how inflation has proceeded over the next 20 years. The orange line indicates where the student formula has been over those 20, like, 20 years. You can see some periods of time where funding was frozen, '03 to '05, and then again, '08 to '11, or 2012, you see a period of freeze, or freeze to public school formula. Those gaps were never made up. And so as you follow that lineup, and it's been more steady since, but it never made up for that gap in funding. Yep, inflation had, or excuse me, the student formula had been tied to the rate of inflation since 2003. Our general fund would, would get $10 million additional funding. So that's the lack, the loss of buying power over those last 20 years. A significant number. Other challenges that we've been experiencing over, especially over the past year, are outlined here. So in inflation, like every family in every other country, education is feeling the impact of inflation from, you know, any materials that we purchase. Our utility rates have seen significant increases over the past couple of years. Fuel for transportation, we'll talk a little bit more about transportation later, contracted services. You're aware of our hiring challenges, that we've had difficulty not only filling our support positions, those positions that are so important for our schools to operate, but also our reserve teachers. And we increased the salary of our reserve teachers, or the, the daily rate for our reserve teachers by about 35% last summer, and that was in reaction to the market. So all the schools around us were in that $185 a day range, and so we made an adjustment to try to keep pace with the market. We still have a hard time attracting substitute teachers. It would be much worse if we were paying $30 to $40 less per day. And that's true for our hourly rate support positions, the settlements with those groups ended up being higher last year because, again, the market demanded it, and we have a hard time attracting bus drivers and our parent educators, our nutrition staff, custodial staff, all of those positions. We can't operate without them, and the market demanded more pay. So that is a significant budget impact. We've also had, during the COVID years, we had three years of declining enrollment in public schools across the nation, and Minnesota no different, about 3.5% decline in enrollment during those years. That's about what we felt as well. That seems to have leveled off. This year, we actually saw a slight increase, a very small, but it indicates a leveling off. And so we're optimistic that we're going to move forward and see those enrollment increases in the future. However, we're going to be very conservative in how we budget for those until we see students in the seats. We're hopeful long-term on enrollment, but like I said, we're being very careful. And then also, the number of students qualifying for special education rose 8.8% during this time. So that's a significant number as well, and we have a strong commitment to serving all of our students, however, whatever their needs are. And then, and oftentimes, our special education students have more needs than many of our other students. And then finally, the COVID relief funds have been a great support for us. We've been able to maintain programming during this time, but those funds are about to, set to expire, and so we'll be spending those dollars down by the end of this coming year.
One thing I would just quickly point out about the number of special ed students that have qualified for special services this year, that 8.8% was a preliminary number that we had when we first developed this presentation. Lisa and I just looked at that number again, we have some better data from MDE now, it's actually increased 7.5% this year, so still a significant increase, but we just want to be accurate in the number that we have, that we're seeing.
All right, as we build our projected budget, we work on assumptions, as I said earlier, we don't know what the legislature's final work is going to be, but we, we need to identify assumptions. So we went with the governor's budget proposal, which increased funding 4% on the formula in year one and 2% in year two, and then funding the special ed cross subsidy at 50%. Right now, it's funded at about 6%. And so that would yield an additional $3.8 million for our school district, which would be a great assist. But our budget is, is built upon these assumptions. Both houses of the legislature had 5 in 5 as their allowance increase, and that, hopefully we're going to get some numbers today, I haven't seen those yet, you didn't see them yet either. So it might be later tonight that maybe some more detail comes out on that, we're watching. The legislature also proposed 100% funding of the cross subsidy, which would be a significant move, but we're not expecting that that's probably going to happen. In terms of enrollment, I mentioned earlier, we think our enrollment's going to potentially see, it's planted out at least, and maybe we see some increases. We're being very conservative in that right now for 2023, we're at 8,301 students. We're actually projecting a decline next year, and that's based on birth date, or birth data for our attendance boundaries. We think we're going to outperform that, but it's a conservative number, because we don't want to project higher numbers than we're, than we get, and if we come in higher than that, we'll be very happy. We're being conservative, and then again, for the following. Andy, walk us through the summary.
So lots of numbers in front of you, I won't highlight all of them, I'll just highlight a few. So we have four columns of data here. The first column is the preliminary budget, so where we thought we were going to be in June of last year for this school year. The revised budget has all of those changes that Tim went through, related to inflation, hiring challenges, et cetera. And then we have the projected budget for the next two years, based on those assumptions from the governor's proposal. So if you look at the orange line, you'll see the net change in fund balances. So coming into this school year, we had planned on deficit spending by about 750 thousand. on deficit spending by about $750,000. We had a plan to right that ship and get back to a balanced budget. But unfortunately, with all of those budget challenges for this year, we're looking at about a $5.6 million deficit. And so now we really know we have to come up with that plan to get back to a balanced budget. And so unfortunately, to do that, we are looking at about $2.1 million of budget reductions, which is what we're here to present on the next slide. What we focus on really is our ending fund balance, our unassigned fund balance. That's the blue line at the bottom. You can see that this year, we're projected to end the year at about 6.3 million, which is 4.7% of our, of our total expenses. And if you recall, our school policy requires that we maintain an 8% fund balance. And so that's what's driving the dollar amount that we're looking at for the target for reductions for next year. We have to have a plan to get back up to that 8%, and we feel confident that this should do it by fiscal year 25, to get us back to 8%, or about $11 million of fund balance. And maintaining that fund balance is really important, that we have those cash reserves. An 8% fund balance is like, like one month of, of your, of your checking account, you know? So if you think about at home, putting it into that perspective, that's really what we need to have in the bank, so we can make payroll and continue to pay all of those bills that come up, you know, every single week. So this isn't new. These budget reductions aren't new. Unfortunately, we've been reducing our budget for the last four years. We've cut over $10 million in that time. And this really shows the departments or the areas of spending within the school district that have, have had those budget reductions impacted. If you look over on the right, the elementary and the secondary, if you combine those two, they account for about $3 million.
Partner on this one, because I don't know as much about McPhail, like the history. But McPhail is a smaller partnership, one that we value as well, but has been something that's hard, again, pulling students out of core instruction. It's solely at Birchlake Elementary, and has been something that Jonathan Lufnick has been looking at, different ways to structure it. Maybe there's ways to do things outside of school, but really has been something that we could just continue and continue to partner in a different way if that's of interest, but it isn't across all of our.
Yeah, part of that, teachers get a bit frustrated with the timing of pulling students out of class. It's lost some instructional time. It tends to happen in the morning. There are some different elements of the program that include some lessons to the DCD program, some early childhoods, sing-along kind of lessons, and then string and piano lessons for the second and fifth graders. So that's a program. Used to be a little more robust than it is right now. They were in some space from us, and so we realize about two-thirds of the expenditure there. It also puts some strain on facility, just the space. It does. And Birchlake projected to have increasing enrollment with the boundary change, and so they really need that. We had a discussion with this, with, at Birchlake with staff, and it wasn't, it was an area they were concerned about, that we should be able to have. Moving on to secondary education. So this is, allows us to align, align our staffing for our projected enrollment, but there's not the reduction in, that there is at the elementary level. So we're seeing a little bit of class size increase at the secondary level. Will result in $700,000 in savings. And you know, it's about, we stepped it at it with a formula of 4.5 student increase. It might seem varying levels, depending on how students register, and whether the efficiencies in the staffing or so, as well as if I start more than I increase, might be in sports or in a department, it might be roughly in another department, or maybe in some areas, like depending on how the enrollment should be done. As we work with principals in secondary schools and staffing, one of the things we look at is that minimum class size, where you have smaller classes, where you're subsidizing that small class sizes by having larger classrooms, where offering classes, classes at, so that allows you to reschedule those students and do higher volume courses where you have more efficiency. And so the target, we think in terms of having less impact on class size, those are ways of doing it, is how can you make some changes that where the impact is really reducing or not handling with class sizes. Teaching and learning. Survey about reduction in number of instructional coaches by 4.5 FTE, and remaining coaches will serve multiple buildings, and then restructuring within the teaching and learning department, and.
I had to, we can go multiple holes in teaching and learning that we're looking at this, and it's a unique time with the S-4 and the firing at the same time. And so it's presenting challenges as we think about coming to eliminating some positions, and then also regaling some of the other position, other funding streams. And so it's complex. We think about really prioritizing, how do we make sure we can support some initiative that we've implemented, some sort of literacy, some nice learning. We're still having conversations, and we have some work to do, like clearly, but that is all connected together, and think about the structure, also thinking about the budget. And so that will be a big deal for us. Teaching and learning, and the whole of the programs in terms of educational equity, support services and technology and innovation for those two.
We'll realize the savings of about $272,500 in those moves. Buildings and grounds are shifting. Our head engineers, additional 25% to long-term facility maintenance, of positions qualifying to be funded out of that funding stream. And so we're able to do an additional $150,000 there. Over 10% in supply budgets across the district, small savings, but you know, it's a, equals an FTE for a classroom teacher. And then utilities, we met with Xcel Energy to talk about our literacy bills and what we should assume in increases for next year. And so the original budget had a 10% increase assumption, and we're able to reduce that to 5% increase, saving us $91,000 plus. So those are some of our reductions. Next slide, we talk about just kind of key takeaways. Andy, you want to do that?
Sure. So really, this is the story of inflation. As Tim said, transportation is a substitute compensation. With transportation, that increased our budget to $10 million alone. And the bulk of that is related to the difficulty to find bus drivers nowadays. And to drive a old school bus, you have to have a CD, a commercial driver's license. Those people are just really difficult to find. And we still need to transport our kids. And so unfortunately, what that means is where we may have had an old school bus, we might now have two or three different vans to transport the same number of kids. And as you can imagine, that costs two or three times the cost. So we're not alone. Districts across the nation, across the state, are feeling that same impact of transportation. And then again, special education moment increase. No, to be clear, this is an increase in the number of kids that qualify for special education services. It's not that we went from like 12% to 20%. It's that the number of students who qualify for services increased by actually 7.5%. And so that comes with the cost. You know, we're, we're proud that we have a program that attracts students. We're proud of that. We just need the legislature to do their part and further special education programming. In our enrollment, we are budgeted conservatively, based on the history of, we've seen consistent declines over the last several years. And so we need to be careful when it comes to enrollment. We do feel that probably those people who wanted to leave have left. And so hopefully, that means that we won't continue to see a decline year over year, and that we'll continue to see this level of now, with some growth going forward. But budgetarily, we have to be conservative, and we can't count on those kids until they actually show up. And again, our long-term outlook looks strong. We're continuing to work with Demographe, who has, has done a recent study and said, yep, we do believe that in the long run, in the next decade, we're going to see some growth. So positivity forward. And then the legislative session. So we should find out, we should come to adjournment by May 28. We're hopeful that that's the case. We heard that today. We'll see some actual targets on spending. When that's all settled down, when we have better targets, we'll bring firmer numbers to the school board, you know, priority being special education cross subsidy, and then linking that formula allowance to inflation. That's just so important for us.
And the other piece we'll watch there is mandates associated with in peace and funding. So we set the target at 2.514 billion last week, which is great. However, it comes with a lot of mandates that are, all of those resources that gives us less ability, you know, to use those funds strategically, support the work we're doing. So we'll watch for that. And thanks to all of our community members and school board members who have advocated and, you know, spoken with our elected officials over the last several months. Makes a difference.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions from the board?
We'll see if you come up with as good questions as the future stick. We had some great, great conversation at our schools, great questions. And then we encourage each building we have with you, see things, you know, you're on the ground, and you see things we might not see. And if you have ideas on ways for us to be more efficient, or where the return on investment is, isn't it, we think it might, you know, where we think it should be, identify those. So we've had a handful of emails from people saying, think about this, think about that. We appreciate all of those.
All right. I'm just going to start here and go around. So Mr. Cojean, well, thank you for starting the equity commitment, because that's a big deal when you're looking at reductions. So I appreciate that. And I'm wondering if there's been, any questions of any impact on instructional, data on the impact of instructional coaches, to look at as you make reductions in that area, to be thinking about, and maybe it's a hard time with the last three years to really look at gains in response to those positions, or?
I love your, you know, to directly connect that strategy, about that with the control, you know, what exactly, but their leadership has been, and we contracted Panover, they have their research company that does education, and asked them to do research on what would be the best model for instructional coaches. And it's me anticipating that we would have to do something, and what came out was our initial model, one, one, and two. And so there, there have been kinds of partnering with principals, moving instruction, doing student-centered coaching, partnering with Mifabish, and really leading science, literacy, you know, under specific affect on my, right now, the shift that has happened. I've been in this position for three years. I, I can't speak enough, and so losing that is hard, but they also, both training moved up your place, and we're very closely with the principals. And so we understand all those things. But the data would be, you know, teachers feeling supportive in class, constantly seeing one instruction, which we have, really have for years. So, you know, how principals are being in actual data would be hard for me to say that. I think, and that really, we think about team leadership, partnering with the leadership, partnering with us.
Is it former principal, the impact of those positions, super valuable. I know that they'll take that into consideration moving forward. And, oh, I did. I saw St. Paul was offering site bonuses for to attract positions, and how that will impact our budget going forward with these shortages.
We've thought of that.
Oh, really?
The number of areas, both on the teacher front, in terms of one-time incentives, and also using our salary scale to incentivize, you know, so it's the incentive there for in a one-time. And we've also done that with a number of our positions, especially on the on-licens support staff side. You know, yes, we tried to depart them, and success from that.
Thank you. Ms. Daniels?
If we, you know, go into the 3.5 staffing ratio, you said 2.2. How does that translate into actually, I mean, saying, you know, how, reduction, positions, could we talk about that number, or don't we have?
Yeah, it's seven positions. So if we were staffed this year at 23.5, we would have had seven less positions, essentially, than we're, than we have. So, so that just the question, to a digital position of specialist, because you're reducing those numbers of sections, that frees up some specialists and two.
And that's included in the set, or?
No, seven plus two.
Okay. And how about the people that are having that most coaching position going in? More people?
Correct. So it's almost integrated at the elementary level, where it was small. So that looks more like 11.5.
Okay.
In terms of what's, that pressure on the elementary.
Right. And I think we would have some retirement perhaps, or?
Yes. So we'll be looking at leaves, we'll be looking at retirements, resignations, and certainly have some of that coming in. We run retirement incentives in two of the previous four years. So we've taken advantage of some of that previously. So we don't have quite as many retirements moving through the system at the moment.
So we're not, I mean, I don't know if they call it, or do this, and we're always doing this, string before we evolve, and, well, I'm sure, I mean, second, I know, so how to get in there. So, I guess, so we'll just have some challenges, and we won't know how that all falls out until a little bit later in the spring, right? Until everything settles out.
So moving on from tonight, we'll kind of finalize that. We're working hard on it. And we already have a pretty good picture of where things will, will land, what we want to make through tonight. And then those specific reductions with them come forward on April 10, especially anything that would possibly affect, that would possibly affect a continuing contract.
All right. Well, who knows? But somebody else is trying to help with strategy, things works. From my experience of 45, I've been showing all three of those. And we realistically know, it hasn't happened as much. Especially, all I can think of is, it's a good thing teachers are hard to find, and we have openings, because we will have wonderful people who can fill them. But it's really hard to do that on certain places, and moving on, and secondary, like I have, subjects and things like that. But I think a good place would be, hopefully, and we keep it. Somebody else has snatched the money with a bonus of $2,000 at St. Paul. So it's, it's a hard, hard question. My question, I don't know, I'll track there, but I'm thinking how hard it is to be in that uncertain place. And all I would say is, don't do it between class periods. So I have to be honest. It's really hard to say. Oh, you got a call. Oh, wow, you're in trouble. I said, oh. So, I mean, I'm very much more sensitive than I used to be. But my question, I've looked at this before, when we look at the cost of electricity, what's going to happen to solar? Been really playing cards on the road, hoping the extent of the name you said, kind of healthy.
Yeah, we're seeing the impact of solar. You know, it's budgeted in though, because we have solar out of the last year. So we'd expect that same return on solar. It's already budgeted yet. Yeah, but it is, solar panels are performing the way that they were projected to. But we call that, they're, they're part of the, you know, that savings of the energy is largely paying off through solar panels over a period of 13. More recent panels, a little longer than that. So much of that is just used to pay off the panels. But we see a small, about 20%.
Could we be using less electricity if we're generating solar?
Yeah, true. Yeah. If we didn't have the solar, we'd certainly see much higher rates for electricity, and a much, you know, bigger budget impact. So we're seeing the savings.
And we're continuing that program as fast as we can, as appropriate.
Yeah, expansion. Yeah, expansion on North Star Elementary this summer, the high school project when it's done, we'll have some solar panel on the road.
Did you have a response, Mr. Moss?
I just had two things that I wanted to say really quickly in response to which we're kind of working. We're always having conversations when we're together with principals and as administrators, we always have a conversation that we're not going to say it might seem to be the easy way out. So when you talk about losing really talented people, if there's even two people that we can hang on to and never have to deliver that message and then try to reel them back in. So we don't take the tact of just letting everyone go and trying to pull people back whenever possible. So, you know, we take that really seriously. We're just engaging in that conversation. That even if there's two folks left, like we're going to hang on to those two folks and put ourselves in a position where we're going to lose somebody. There's, that's just one thing that I want to make sure that we're clear about. And then another piece too, our administrators are really thoughtful about that impact part. So yeah, in terms of figuring out how they're going to deliver really tough messages. And in addition to that, two, trying to get this balance right between we want to let people know as early as possible so they're in the best position that we've put them in for their own personal prospects. And we want to have much of good information for calendar. So we're not talking to more people or fewer people than we should be. So they're really thoughtful and a lot of hours are going into that right now. So I appreciate, you know, the comments there and working really hard on doing that to affect everyone's, to the best extent we can, and just make sure to keep people a part of this front of mind.
And a lot of people want for every person, so that changes your viewpoint.
Yep.
But anyway, my only other question we increased, had some question about special ed. And I just wondered if we're seeing, as we look at programs that are so excellent and draw people in and move into the state like we have a special ed program. I guess I would wonder if we still see that we pull a higher percent than surrounding districts? Just curious. It's good to know we're great, but we're long compared to other districts, so possibly not only, but we do pull the enrollment and after that ensure programming.
They say a little higher, higher mobility among special education students during the school year. Some high schools see a little higher percentage of special education students that are growing during the year.
Ms. Thompson? So talking about reducing class sizes, what are we looking at there? Because I know we already have class sizes that, I mean, data shows the more kids you have in the classroom to the teacher ratio, the less learning happens, the more students suffer from those, these class sizes. Do we have like a number is or where we're thinking of cap?
Yeah, you'll see class sizes up to 36 in some cases at the high school. Middle school is more in the 30 to 32 range. Typically more in the 32 range, but you'll have some increase where they're a little higher.
What kind of classes would happen 36?
It, you know, where they have electives, a by ed class might be a little higher. Band and choir tend to be able to handle larger numbers and actually sometimes it works better for them to have the larger ensembles. Principals really work at the core, trying to keep those core classes as low as possible. But yeah, I think the examples I just gave were probably areas where you're going to see the most, larger class sizes.
And so for the projected enrollment, you know, and maintaining our fiscal year of 17, 18, what was our, do we know what our, I didn't look, I should have looked before I came, but what the student, what our student population was then compared to what we have today?
Well, I think it was around 8,700 in fiscal year 18.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good to hear. And then, you know, the increase in our spent students, I was wondering, you know, there's a wide variation of what they need and the expense that goes along with it. Do we know with the increase we've had, are those students that require a lot more funding to be put into their education needs or, you know, I mean, if it's like a student who has emotional behavior concerns, they still need services, but not as much services as others that are more recent programs. So I'm thinking more like, do we have the capacity to keep the staff that we need to make sure those students are doing their life, you know, social workers and some people that work with those students? Have the capacity to keep that staff and that board to make the work?
There's like one that.
Definitely do. And if there is a student that moves in and maybe has more significant resources or has additional resources, I would work with the N10 and people or make sure other needs to get matched. But yeah, there's a wide variety of what is getting required to progress. But I would say that would always be.
Yeah, and so strategy around where the student is placed, where the needs can be best met sometimes isn't where the program is requested. So finding the right place in the district where those needs are being. One thing I heard her ask, maybe my interpretation, is there a category that's more prevalent as we see the increase or is it across the board?
I would say probably you do it. I would probably want to get to that.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we can connect on that. And then the instructional coaches, I mean, you know, after the great presentation tonight about our, our foundations of success for students. And I know you guys do everything you can to make sure we're not kind of where there's no way that you're still really, I guess I'm, I don't have any other questions because I know you do your due diligence to make sure we're not taking on, can't, really we can't, but we have.
Yeah, I mean, I'll note that we monitor class sizes around the twin cities. We have an annual class size report and our elementary has been a priority to maintain on the smaller end of those class sizes, we'd be able to do that. Secondary, we're a little closer to that middle, but the elementary class size is pretty small.
And that's very nice to, just because I know that some of the classrooms, even that my downer is in on the, you know, on the middle school end, there's a lot of students and it's hard for those teachers to control those students too because they're a little more of a function, not really able to have the energy on all levels. But I think it can be a struggle on both ends. So it's, hopefully they will come through with some funding that we need so that it doesn't have to be like this. It's a chemistry that we're in this situation. It really is unnecessary as far as I'm concerned. Like we shouldn't have to be doing this, but we.
Right. Dr. Wilson?
As I look at student learning, step development, models and trends and changes from, you know, give it all to everybody at an auditorium, the learning coach at the other end of the spectrum, I think one of the things that I've impressed with when I was teaching, learning the science of reading is the individual on the wrong input and effort that all elementary teachers have done. Hours and hours and then you'll call for this, they're, they're doing the program. And I think that kids are benefiting immensely. And it's there, you know, some compensation for their time, but I don't know how that compares with other types, but they end up doing anybody, it's their blood, blood and tears. So I would like to just give a thank you to all of those elementary teachers that have a whole of their extra time when the class is gone before they go into their other, um, learning that is impacting our kids. I think it's going to be, if you want to see the impact, we'll see it in the waiting scores. Not everything shows up that way, but I really think that is true for me. Isn't it his people? They get it.
Right. Yeah, Ms. Daniels?
We're pushing our speaking process and the best representation, I know that's just kind of coming through and all those numbers are hard to come through. Is there a low end where you don't want a class? What is that cutoff? I mean, I know there's a gap popping.
Yeah.
Maybe 18 years rent or?
Oh, it's, it's higher than that. 25.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not that clear cut, depends on the area and what, you know, what the seat was. It could get a little more complicated than that, but yeah, that's kind of the number that we've been looking at.
There's some comment. Still connected to the special ed role, former directors, special education. I just know that numbers are coming across the state in terms of the percentage in districts everywhere. So our district's growth or special education is not unique. We're just identifying more kids with more needs and I don't know if that's a reflection from students being home or committed or, you know, just a lot of mobility and things like that. So I just wanted to say that. And I know other districts are also feeling that in the state. So, and why we're, our job, but our biggest job is in identification, identifying and thus identifying as by most kids. So I think our district was not finding extra services and so I'm probably, this is true.
I just want to say I'm very grateful for all the time and effort that Mr. Wall and Ms. Johnson and all the cabinet have put into making these adjustments. As one of my full board members said, we shouldn't have to be making these decisions. And I appreciate the level of thought that has gone into this and I'm hopeful that the legislature will do their job and highly recommend that contact Senator Heather Gustafson, Representative Breon Curran and Representative Elliot Engen and tell them what needs to be done. So I just wanted to express my thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. We will move into discussion item D3, update of 2023-24 and overview of 2024-25. Yikes, 425, your calendar.
Allison, under group board, I'm the only one who lives so far in advance of calendar. Hang on there for too long. So I have an update to the 23-24 calendar that I'd like to discuss tonight and then a preliminary calendar for 24-25 academic calendar. First, the update to 23-24 would be adding three professional development, much like we did for the 22-23 school year to support our work in the literacy plan that Dr. Masters referenced for our letters professional development. This would be the final year that we would have to do this. We are building internal capacity and doing train with trainer. We will have our own trainers for letters. Next year, we still have to rely on external trainers and letters is a very difficult program and hard to get these for. We also have a younger parameter that we are moving forward with, starting next year. We won't have a school day that isn't, as much as we can avoid and we can avoid it. That we would not, we would not have solely elementary out of school knowing that that could put a strain on our community. And so we have a lot of professional development our educators are engaging in. We're really excited about our unified high school, but the learning studio of educators being tied to think about providing, continuing to think about how that is impacting our instruction. We're implementing our standard based learning framework, really looking at the foundation of learning and how that's implemented so there's more than enough professional development that we would utilize. Two additional days for elementary, it would actually be three additional days for secondary for professional development. So the dates are October 23rd, December 21st, and then February 9th, which was originally solely early childhood fifth grade day, we would extend that to early childhood 12 plus. So for next year's calendar, there would no be any days that are solely elementary days. And that would be a parameter that we would move forward with. Any questions about that before I move on to 24-25?
No question. I appreciate that you guys brought that into consideration. I think that's a great thing that our community will be thankful for.
Mr. Fogi? And these additional days at the elementary, oh, letters?
Yep. So there's, there are letters given in. And so the training, those days, they, Miss Babish probably could talk better than I can about the actual how they've been set up, but they're pretty much.
Yep. So yep, they're training fees with external facilitators. And I've heard of that at the bridge to practice where they actually need to do in a collection research on the way to be able to protect those things that they learn, what that next rotation is. Research based, we have a new job embedded.
And next year, that would be the second year of two years of P E D. So we would have the majority of our teachers K5, all trained in letters, which is a huge endeavor that we took and a really great skill set and asset for us. Very grateful for all the work that our educators have been doing. Then 24-25. And so 24-25, this is not our complete calendar. We're still doing some work at the high school level around thinking about the schedule. So what I've brought to you are the big major days that we know that families really think about. And then I will bring the detailed calendar to you in September that has all of the days. And so what you'll notice in September, we are completing to implement our soft start for sixth and ninth grade students, their first day of school would be the Tuesday after Labor Day, September 3rd. Then September 4th would be the first day of school for first through 12th grade students. And then September 5th would be the first day of school for kindergarten. We have the dates on there for the traditional dates for Education Minnesota. We have around the elections that we have, we have had off consistently for quite a few years now. And then deep around some holidays that are predictable within our calendar and spring break, which is something that matters to a lot of our families. And then our winter holiday break. The other breaks that will be placed are ones that do have potential to hold. I work with a calendar committee that's made up of administrators and educators. And there's just a few things that if we were to bring some, maybe to you around the high school bell schedule and how we would want to do their schedule there, it will impact our calendar and I don't want to have to bring calendar updates very frequently if I don't have to. And so what I would like to do is bring those details to you in September.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Awesome. Thank you so much.
This will come back to you for action in the next portion.
Thank you. All right, we will move into our operational items. First is operational item C1, action on official depositories for school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. Ms. Johnson?
So we've had turnover within the finance department and as that happened, we need to come to you and have you approve those individuals who are authorized to initiate electronic transfers. And so that portion of this documented, or that portion of this document is reflected to show Erica McPice, who is our new controller. So this just allows her to initiate wire transfers. The recommended, recommended action is to approve a list of official depositories for district funds and authorized banking accounts and signatures for 23.
So we heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve? A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second? Second by Ms. Ray Fogi, any discussion? This will require a roll call vote or ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Fogi? Aye. I, Arcand?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Move into operational item C2, which is action on the fiscal year 23-24 budget adjustments. Ms. Johnson?
Earlier this evening, we reviewed the proposed budget reductions for the 2023-24 school year. Three recommended actions to approve the 2023-24 budget adjustments as recommended.
We heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve? So a motion by Ms. Ray Fogi and a second? Second by Dr. Newmaster, any further discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to.
Dr. Fogi? Aye. Allison, aye. Arcand? Daniel? Allison?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you. And then move into our final operational item, C3, action on 23-24 and 2024-25 school year calendars, Dr. Gillespie?
Earlier this evening, I presented updates to the 23-24 calendar and preliminary 24-25 calendar, the recommendations that you presented earlier.
Heard the recommended action, can I get a motion to approve? A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay, second by Ms. Thompson. Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment, I know it's on the 24-25 calendar that it'll be available by Christmas time, and I'm sure students and staff will very much appreciate that time off, so.
Great, any further discussion, one more. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. All right, with that, I would call for a motion to adjourn. Dr. Arcand and a second? Second by Ms. Daniels, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and we adjourn.